When I just do this stuff last night, I'm first in the frying pan again.
Hey, I don't think you're on the frying pan day.
All right.
Oh.
All right, good. Hey, um. Are we, are we live streaming again? Is what we're doing? You're high. Supposed to turn this on, Nathan?
It would probably be ideal for the public to follow it.
Hello? No, it's not. Okay, there it is. Um. With our budget from twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yep.
Uh, we were instructed not to do any increases, which we didn't. Carrie, um, basically kept everything the same with the exception of the five percent increase on the wages, which is what we were instructed to do, um, as you can see. Um, and if you look at the overtime, he went from a hundred and five down to a hundred thousand, but then she moved the chief deputy's wage into eleven seventy, which was fifteen thousand, into that, which takes the total to one fifteen. It's kind of confusing. Do you have any questions? Well, I can have Carrie explain that. Oh, I'm sorry. You said you were ready.
We're all ready. Just keep talking. We're not listening anyway.
Okay, our budget was the same as last year. I'm good, ready to leave. Okay. Now, we're, we're basically the same, um, from twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six on our budget. We kept everything the same with the exception of the five percent increase, which is what we were instructed to do on wages. The hundred thousand you see went from a hundred and five to a hundred thousand. We were able to shift the chief deputy's overtime wages to another fund, um, to eleven seventy. If you find that in your wage stuff, you'll see that went from, what, Carrie? From, um. Went from, yeah, to fifteen thousand for the overtime, right? Yeah. Everybody find that? Look for Fund Eleven Seventy. It was zero before. We moved fifteen thousand, uh, from the zero to fifteen thousand for the overtime. It looks like it went down five thousand dollars, but actually it went up a little bit.
More than just these two papers?
Yes. That's why I said, look through your papers and look for the sheriff. Look for O-O-O-five.
Yeah, I have O-O-O-five, but there's no fund for eleven seventy on this.
Alright.
What's it look like?
Here's what, here's about what it looks like, uh, as far as lines that go down is this one. Which one? Oh, no, it's. Okay.
It's probably towards the back. The extra funds are in the back.
He's talking about eleven seventy, which is the lit public safety.
There you go, public safety.
And it should say lit public safety at the top of. Right now.
Yes, public safety.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, if you guys are looking for it, it's all the way at the back. No, but just towards the back. When you start hitting key funds and firearms training, which is probably something we need to, right?
Yep. Yeah, he's got the eleven fifty-six, the eleven oh-one.
Hey, Chris, can you do us a favor and can you read us the top num- like, all the funds that you're gonna talk about? What the numbers are? So, eleven fifty-six, eleven seventy, is there anything else?
There's the general fund, of course, that's a thousand.
Right.
And then eleven oh-one is the accident report. You got firearms train, which is eleven fifty-six. I really won't talk a lot about that. You got the misdemeanor fund, which is eleven seventy-five.
Hold on, hold on. Eleven oh-one. Okay, eleven fifty-seven.
You have the sheriff's pension fund. In line, I'm just, this is what funds involve the sheriff's department. That's eleven ninety.
You just need to pull them out of our packet, so just.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's eleven ninety-three. I'll go a little slower.
Thank you.
I didn't know. I thought you had them separated out already.
Is drug-free yours?
Nope. And you have statewide nine-one-one. That's a twelve twenty-two.
Misdemeanor year fund?
Yes. Misdemeanor, ready bread. All right, um, you have the twelve thir- thirty-five. That's lit, P-S-A. That's what involves our department. And I'm not gonna talk about each one. That's just what involves us. I'm just gonna talk about the notable ones. Yes, twelve thirty-five. That's lit.
Oh, wait, jail release cut here, right? Eleven eighty-five is here, right? Oh, that's prob- nope, never mind. That's probably a commissioner's.
You want eleven seventy-five. Sheila, that's the misdemeanor fund.
It's not just.
Twelve twenty-two is yours?
Yes.
Twelve thirty-five was the last one?
Yes.
I got that one. But twelve, as high as it goes is twelve. That's the papers we couldn't find when you said. Are you guys okay?
Yeah, I thought you guys were separated out. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's the firearms training.
Does everybody have their papers pulled out? Okay. Okay, so there should be eleven oh-one.
Coming in here?
For budget?
No, she's under me.
Okay.
Twelve thirty-five. Eleven, I don't know. It's cut off. Eleven ninety-three. Twelve thirty-five. Eleven seventy-five. Eleven oh-one. Eleven fifty-six. Eleven seventy. Twelve twenty-two.
I don't know. Thirty. Four twenty.
On my time. The clerk? Yeah, and the court. The court's thing? Yeah. Oh, the clerk.
Okay.
Start over.
The question was brought up about animal control. She won't come in. She's under my control. The commissioners changed that. Maybe you're under Jeff's, uh, term, but she's under me. Barry says it's twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars is her budget. Um, actually, it looks like we went down a thousand dollars on hers. Anybody have any questions about that?
What was the total?
Uh, it went from thirty-nine thousand dollars to thirty-eight thousand dollars. Oh, I was looking for it twenty-twenty-three. I'm sorry. When it actually went down a thousand dollars. Carrie shifted those numbers around. But she's under my control. Uh, the general fund, the big thing was, was the wages. Like I said, we put in five thou- or five percent wage increase was what we were instructed to do. Whether that comes to pass or not, we don't know, but that was the difference in that from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. Um, notable in the vehicles, we kept those the same. That's hopefully getting to, actually, let me go back. Last year with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we was able to get four vehicles because we bought two used ones, two new ones. Generally, you get a vehicle, you get, you buy it, and then you equip it. Past, what Jeff and I has done is tried to buy a vehicle and then buy, we equip it out of commissary. What we're trying to do is switch that to buy the vehicle and equip it out of the general fund. Now, we'll do what we can do. This year, I'm gonna try and get a jail van. Our two vans are full-size vans. I'd like to be able to get a smaller van because sometimes i- it's easier to take a small, like a caravan or something like that, to some of these places there and take a full-size van. And our vans are getting a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them. So, um, I'd like to keep that the same if we could. We have two people up for vehicles at this time. Like I said, I'll supplement if I can out of the commissary. So, you know, you're talking, you know, forty thousand dollars for a vehicle, plus another fifteen to equip it. You're, you're getting up. And that's the way they are everywhere. You know, I put restrictions on them, what they can buy. I don't let them get the Tahos, the Escalades, that, that sort of thing. Trust me, they would want to if they could, but I, I say no, none of that. A lot of departments do that. I try and get by as cheap as I can. The days are gone of the twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollar pickup trucks. Dodge did away with that. I don't know if you guys are, are aware of that. Um, Dodge did away with that a few years ago. We, we can't do that anymore. It, it is what it is. Is it, yeah, okay, it's on. So, we were, like I said, we were fortunate enough to be able to get four vehicles. Uh, this year, we have two people up for them, as I said before. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to equip them. Anybody have any questions about the vehicles? I know there's always seems to be a bunch of questions about that. People say, well, what happens? I get questions from the public, what happens to the pickup trucks? They thought we spent a lot of money for them. Well, we weren't, but we are again because Dodge did away with that.
They done away.
No, they did away with the, uh, reduction in price. You could buy a forty-five thousand dollar truck for twenty. The truck was twenty-six thousand five hundred, and then the dealer always put five hundred dollars. They weren't making any money off of it, so Dodge did away with that. They thought we were spending forty-five, fifty thousand dollars on a truck. We were not. We were paying about half because Dodge gave an incentive to, to first responders and, but they did away with that about three or four years ago. They don't offer that anymore. Um, they still offer the truck. They just don't give you that reduction in price anymore. So, you know, they were selling a lot of trucks, but that's why a lot of departments went away with that. They did away with that. You see a lot of the Chevys and that sort of thing. Now, if they did, of course, I'd jump right on top of that, but, but they don't do that anymore. So. That's why the, the cost went up so much. You know, if we could find something with ten, fifteen thousand miles on it, I don't have a problem with doing that. But the problem with doing that is you're still paying thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for a, for a vehicle, which, you know, you might as well get a, a new one for just a couple thousand dollars more. You still have the warranty, the three-year warranty. So, I priced a minivan the other day, and it was thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars for, for, uh, a minivan. Trust, looking at a jail van is what one of the dealerships priced me, and I can get a new one for about the same price, and it had twenty-five thousand miles on it. So, you know. Any more questions on the vehicles?
I think I'd buy new.
You know, the other two vehicles.
You got special deal on him. You got warranty. You got zero miles.
Yeah, you know, and the two of.
Money on the bike.
Two other vehicles we bought were used. Uh, Fred and I got, my other, my vehicle's all, was ten years old. Um, so I was able to get a really good deal on mine, and I was able to get mine traded in and mine equipped for twenty-five thousand dollars. Cause mine was, was four years old. It looks new, but it did have a few miles on it. It'll last me the rest of my career. Um, so I was actually able to do that and to be able to get something that reasonable. And with Fred's vehicle, it was basically the same thing, cause we don't drive so many miles. We was able to get a, a really good price on the vehicle, and that's why we was able to get the four vehicles last year, which I thought was really good, so. Uh. What else? Animal control, I went through that. The accident reports, that's pretty well self-explanatory. Firearms training. Uh, the misdemeanor fund. Did you tell me on the way in, that's going away?
Well, we was not getting that deposit.
Okay.
Wouldn't they do that?
Yeah.
I wonder, is that part of that? You know that, Nathan, if that's.
The misdemeanor fund.
The misdemeanor fund is one away, what they used to maintain the jail. Did that go away with Senate Bill One?
I see, it looks like.
Hey, Sheriff, just on your general fund one. Only went up like a hundred and twenty thousand. That's with that five percent increase.
On which?
Just the, just the zero zero five, the one you was done talking about. Went too fast. I just, I just subtracted what you did last year, what you have this year. Thousand dollar difference. Uh, I just wanna say, I think that's pretty good. I don't, we haven't even talked about it. But that, that probably that five percent is what it is.
Yes, that's exactly what that is. You know, I can't take credit for that. Carrie did all that. Carrie worked a long time doing all that. Um, but that includes that five percent. She shifted some things around, um, and was able to do that. You know, and I know last night, there was a lot of discussion on the, on the amount of stuff I transferred. You gotta keep, you gotta keep in mind fifteen to twenty percent of that was insurance money a- and, and prosecutor's money. That wasn't total money for, for, that I had in my budget. We were just asking for money that was owed to us on insurance claims. You know, I think it's over a hundred thousand dollars, but like I said, fifteen to twenty percent of that was money from other sources. So, it looked like a lot, but really it wasn't out of our budget. So, I just want everybody to keep in mind with that, cause I know there was a lot of discussion on that last night. Normally, I don't come in and ask for four or five transfers. That's better than additional, but, but last night, that's where I came from. I just want you guys to keep that in mind, so. Um. Any more questions on the general fund? Cause I have something else I wanna bring up to you guys. I wanted to bring it up today.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, you were here last night and listened to four C talk about how they're revamping their services and have all these additional things. Is that anything that you can u- use in the jail?
They do a lot of programs in the jail. I, I'd like for you to, I'd like for you to keep the navigator position there. I know you guys have, there's a lot of discussion about that. You know, it's the first person I turn to whenever I need anything. When I first came into office, that just started coming about, so.
Hold on, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about.
I know who you're talking about.
Freedom Therapy, Therapy and Recovery Service. There's a twenty thousand dollar line item. Uh, I'm, so is there anything, are we duplicating services with four C in that?
No.
Okay.
No. The, um. Um. The name is, uh, when we call them out to, uh, what, what was she talking about last night? The, uh, the acronyms escaping me right now. When we call them out.
Mobile Crisis Unit?
Mobile Crisis Team, yeah, MCT Team, yeah. We, we call them a lot. She was exactly right with that. It frees up our officers. Normally, before that came about, our officers had to sit there for hours, three, four, five, and six hours at a time. Now, we'll turn them over to them. They make the assessment where they go to a facility or they go to a hospital. So, that really frees them up to be able, they don't have to sit there the whole time unless they're violent. So, yes, she was exactly right there, so. And no, we're not duplicating that service. Oh. No, no, Tim meets with them individually. No, that's not on top. That's totally separate, and that, we're not duplicating that service. Tim comes in and meets with them one-on-one, um, and that's not a service. That's more of an individual thing. No, I don't feel like we're duplicating that service. I didn't realize that's what she was asking me. No.
I, I guess just, just a statement. Counsel. I would really ask the judges. They always come in, talk a big talk. All those. Ask about. Feeling about what? That's. Not saying.
Yeah.
My time. It would have been.
Ran a lot different now. I went to their open house and they get their funding. Used to be funded a lot different. It was funded, our money went to the state. The state gave it to the federal. The federal sent it back, and now it's just going to the federal. Federal sent in a lot more money. They have, said their wages have increased, so they're trying to keep their, you know, the retention of their help. And they're doing a lot better job of that. So, it is a lot different. The open house that, uh, down here at the old Curtis Building, I don't know what they call it now, but it's not the four C Health Land now, by the airport.
Yes.
They have changed a lot of stuff. I mean, good or bad.
I know they.
I mean, I think it's gonna be better. They seem to care more.
You get, you get beds down there, the.
Very hard to find.
They're, we're still holding. They, they would say, you know, we have beds. Really mentally ill people. Some time to have a bed.
I think.
They, they haven't even been there that long.
Those are the same people. I could, same people.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant that building.
No. No, they, they supposedly had a hospital bed.
Oh, I love, yeah.
They would never have.
And Jeff, Jeff is right. The judges have a better assessment on that. I just.
I think why she was here last night was because that it's, they're set up differently starting this year. That's why they're not able to, that's why they're not taking the money from us this year, the money that we normally give them. What did you say, Trish?
Yeah, this year it would have been a hundred, or next, for next year would have been like.
So, they've completely restructured mental behavioral health, and I think that's why they're trying to come to the table and explain like, we're not the same as we used to be. This is, this is new. We have the ability to pay people more. We have the ability to be, they bought the building. They, like, they're invested in a different way in the community than they were. So, I think they're trying to set the table so that we understand that they're here in a different capacity than they were in the past.
And my whole question about the navigator, does. Have money on a navigator, I don't think. My thought was. Happy with it. I don't know how much longer the judges. Uh, that is my only que-.
We're paying for Katie.
I'll say.
What I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm saying that if four C has money that they can spend. Katie, don't have.
I mean, maybe that's a conversation.
Well, that's what I was saying. Okay.
More discussion.
What's that?
There'll be more discussion before it's over.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Feel like I'm in the middle of it.
Another question I had on the, um, wages. This reflects the total wages that is coming out of, out of general. Uh, on the zero 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 five. Is the, this does not reflect the part that's being paid out of ARPA right now?
You know about that?
Yes. Okay, okay. That's something that unfortunately need to keep in mind that we're not gonna have funds in ARPA anymore to cover this. We need to.
Yeah, how much was?
Over roughly four hundred.
And you have a printout for the ARPA fund? Or is that budget? It's in the separate click one. Starts with eight one.
Everybody good with that stuff? Cause I wanna bring up another issue you guys are gonna have to address within the next year or two. Any other questions on the budget so far?
I appreciate that you guys didn't add anything to your budget.
No, Carrie's the one that, to blame for that. She did a lot of work on this. I just oversaw it. Um, last, last week, we had the state jail inspector come in. Um, last year, he made a notation about our showers are rusting out. Um, we passed the jail inspection last year, of course. We passed it this year, but he said, you guys need new showers. So, with that being said, I had Stephen Taylor start reach out to some companies for this. We haven't got any bids. That's a very narrowly focused construction idea. I reached out to John Alley, said, uh, the construction guy here at the, at the jail now. He said, ah, it's nothing we mess with. So, that's something we're gonna have to address. Um, we don't wanna be shut down because of our showers are all rusting out. Um. I went into one, the light didn't even come on, and they're still showering in there. Um, he took no notation. He said, I'm telling you, but you need to start addressing this. Um, so, we're gonna start getting bids on that. I don't know if it's gonna be twenty thousand or two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. I have no idea what that's going to cost us, but it is something we're gonna have to address in the near future. I don't know if it's gonna have to be before next year, but he said, we have to, we have to address that, the showers. We still passed, but we're gonna have to replace some showers in, in the jail. Um. Yes, you can see they're rusting around the outside. Now, Steve and my jail commander talked, I don't know if they can pull those inserts out, but can you see the caulking is bad? It, it's come out, the lights. I had pictures of them. I should have brought them, but I was trying to get my budget around. They're all completely rusted, and like I said, one doesn't even come on anymore, but still, still, they're still using the showers. So, um, he had the blueprints out, looking at them when I was coming up here to do this, but something you wanna keep in mind, that, that's something we're gonna have, we're gonna have to address is those showers in the back. Um. Uh, five? Five, six? Two of them are just, or, or, I don't wanna say beyond serviceable right now, but they're still using them. So, they're just barely being able to use them. I wouldn't wanna take a shower in the dark, but I asked Stephen, are they still used? He goes, yes, they are. So, I just wanna put that in the back of your mind. That's something I'm starting to get bids on now. And I reached out to Nathan. That's why I wanted him to stay for this, so he can tell you about a fund that we haven't used for a while.
So, so when he says that he reached out to me, I happened to be in the building, and he said.
Yeah.
Here, come here. So, um, as you all may remember, up in, up through twenty-twenty, we had the special jail lit that funded a lot of the operations and maintenance to that building from basically the time it was built until it expired. There's still about nineteen thousand six hundred dollars in that fund, and you haven't budgeted anything out of it for your four. That is an eligible source for this, that we are no longer treating as an everyday operation. We also have two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in change, plus whatever interest may have accrued the last time the CD matured in our cumulative jail. I don't know when the county stopped assessing taxes for that fund, but we have not budgeted anything out of it, probably at least the last fifteen year. And that is for the construction, repair, remodeling, and enlarging and equipment of a county jail. But that's language quoted. So, you've got between, depending on that interest amount, you've got between two hundred and eighty and three hundred thousand dollars sitting in two funds that we don't ever use and that are narrowly tailored towards jail-related expenses you could use for the sheriff to be able to get these issues corrected without dipping into our normal operation, county general.
I, I think that, you know, anything that involves safety in the jail needs to be addressed as quickly as possible, you know, responsibly.
Yeah, we've already started the process of getting bids, and like I said last night, I've got pictures of it all, and if any, you wanna come in and I can show you. We can, I can take you the males in the back. I don't know the females. It might be more of an issue, but, um, I can show you what I'm talking about, cause it's, it's, the lights are extremely bad, and I don't know, like I said, there are inserts that they can come out and they can redo the construction around it, if that would be an option, which would be less rather than replacing the whole shower. But I, I hate to have to shut down the whole jail because we, we don't have workable showers, so. He made a notation last year. This year, he made a stronger notation. He said, I'm still, Pat, you just still did a good job. Don't get the wrong idea. They did an excellent job passing everything, but we're coming to the point where we gotta replace those showers.
Okay. That's a commissioner thing.
But you're the money.
And they have to send it to them.
I know.
Send it to us.
But I just wanna.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, I just wanna give you guys a heads up. So, any more questions about the budget? Um, I'll try and answer them for you.
I'm good. Are, are you still getting the firearms training money?
Not sure, but I think that's the only way. We're waiting to see if they, they don't tell us, I guess, at that time. So, it's just when they ran out of money, and so far, I haven't. Not sure, but I think that's the only way. We're waiting to see if they, they don't tell us, I guess, at that time. So it's just when they ran out of money and so far I haven't seen a deposit.
I'd only talk a little bit about it, about, well, it's gonna be three times a year, not a commissary money, but one bit of good news is the money that they took away from me as far as phone calls, they gave us back a couple of months ago because some of the bigger counties was gonna start losing some of that money. So we're actually getting a little bit more money from our phone calls here. So that'll increase that a little bit. So um, I know it's confusing to talk about it, but they did away with that for two months, which was quite a bit of money coming in. And that's why I've said a lot of stuff. That's why I don't ever come in to ask you guys about training and stuff, cause we pay totally, when these guys go for training, we pay for all that out of commissary money. So that's why you never have me come in here and ask for that money, ask you guys to pay for that. So, or the commissioners, I guess. So that was a bit of good news for us. Nothing else? That was pretty painless.
Go ride your side by side now.
And I've got everything on it too. Yeah. I write about every night, me and my wife and my dogs.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, you got one.
What's that?
Nine eleven service. Yeah. That one jumps fifty.
Uh, you gotta give me a minute to get to it, Brad. I don't know where you're talking about. Where's that?
Statewide nine eleven. Service.
You probably know about it. I do. What happened, Carrie?
Mine says one fifty.
Yeah. And you've only spent sixty-seven so far.
Those come due just at random times throughout the year. Yes.
Okay. Not to interrupt, I'm not to interrupt, I guess. Clarity here. You guys are paying that WTH bill. Guys are, that comes out of your budget. That's everybody's WTH. Right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So that covers. Yeah.
Yeah, that covers everybody.
That, that WTH bill is that, that's been like that. We try to cut it out there.
Yeah, and I just, you know, last night, I know you guys, maybe that's a commissioner saying about the the IT thing. I think that's a great idea for you guys to do that. It's so much easier for me to call somebody locally to do that. I know Jenny's here. Um, well, I can't say that, I can't agree with Adam enough, you know, when I can call somebody locally to come work on our computers, I think that's a great idea. If you guys have any say so with that at all, that'd be great. So that's my two cents on the IT position. You guys looking for the next one or still something on me? You good?
Thank you, guys.
All right. I'm gonna shut this off till the next person turns it on.
Laura. Good morning.
I do. I do.
Is it more than one page?
Yep, one page. She's not like Sheriff. She got one page.
Okay, so just, just to roughly six, six, so few ones, I'm gonna go through all of them individually. The electoral official first step, we got a five percent increase and I'm just rounding the numbers. Um, the part time help is sixteen thousand. It's the same as it was for twenty twenty-five. For the spring of twenty twenty-five, we spent seven thousand seventy-one dollars for these third collections. So that's about half of the number collections, we do the other half. However, because for the last year or two, we, we, the county provides as a separate patient for tax collections. This amount should go down. The problem is I just don't know how much, so I just never descend. I really don't expect it to be that much next year. I just don't, I don't want to increase it in time out. Um, the envelopes stay the same, shouldn't go, we shouldn't do anything at all. I think we'll put our envelopes. The tax statement in train, we um outsourced to L B Markley, um, also in our net at the time of our. We spent forty thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. We had twenty twenty-five and then we paid them the postage to mail these out. So the next line was, we spent six thousand seven hundred twenty-nine postage per year and we only send these tax statements a year. So that six thousand seven hundred was a little bit more than was budgeted in twenty twenty-five. Those have gone up. I will assume I and Markley, who's their fees, so I just put seven thousand thirty-three. Travel, I would love to, I'd put a hundred dollars more on there and a hundred dollars more on the equipment repair. Rents and leases, I did fifty dollars on the lockbox. We have, the treasurer's office has a lockbox, we have the First National Bank. To keep in, keep our current CDs. And it's thirty dollars for the amount of fee. I don't see it going back to any point. Then the Treasurers Association, we made two hundred seventy-nine dollars as a fee, twenty-five, I think that's going to go up. Travel, again, I don't know how much, so I put forty dollars in. And then office equipment, I increased that from one thousand to two thousand to four thousand, I'm still having to go with this. It looks beautiful. I don't know how functional this, I don't know, I don't really know the situation. I think things have changed, I just don't know how. Very simple.
Thank you.
Very simple, yes.
I'm good. Hey, thank you very much.
Anybody, if I have a question?
No, I'm good.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Yeah, you miss it, don't you?
God, tell us how you really feel.
County extension has two, right?
Yep. Pages.
Is one of those listed in the back?
Pardon?
Is one of them in the back, the extension?
No, it's just, it's just a.
In the front, kind of.
Okay, so, another one?
Take a break, have a donut.
There you go.
Sort your stuff.
Yeah, there you go. So you had two packs of information. One was really thick and one was thinner. The second thinner one is also a grant. The eight thousand and the nine thousand series. Just wanted to kind of make you aware of that. Yes. The Community Foundation, which will be the next one after extension, is um in that small packet I was just talking about, France. Last page is Community Foundation. Yes. Two oh one. This is a was mainly contracted.
I like, I like them all in numbered order.
Yeah.
It does make it, but it's, you know, all the numbers flow that way. So, but it does make it harder to find them because it's like, ah. But I'm getting better at it. We're getting better.
That's Community Foundation. But the um contracted services. I know it says Superior Court and it's part of what we pay for the Superior Court. Yeah, this is a grant.
My thing. Not bringing any green.
About, um, it's in this package.
But that's all things you put on there.
Hey. Hey.
No. No, not until you guys tell me the amounts. Awesome. Yes, yes, because it's not been advertised. Yes, because I do need to, Don contacted me last night about when he comes for the commissioner one, if he can be here. Um, he's wanting to, I know, um, Suzie Overton, it came about the Francisville Fire Department, um, wanting to ask for more money for them. So he emailed me last night and said he did want me to double the amount for the fire departments or to ask if, if he didn't make it. And then also, um.
Who, who was asking for that?
Don, three.
AJ, do you know, does most of your funding come from the trustees? Do you have trouble with your trustee? Cause I don't think we have an idea what the trustees pay for volunteer part of, as far as accounting. Like Star City, it seems like they would always complain about their trustee couldn't give them any money. Yeah, they're, they're out on Facebook talking about it.
Now, Rich Grove does, I do the books for Rich Grove. And I know that, that we do Madera, cause we do actually free fire for Rich Grove because of being kind of centered in north. So we pay North Jetson, White Post, and Winamac.
Are, are you the trustee?
I am not.
So, you know, who tells them or where do they get watched or fed by the fire departments?
Through their advisory board.
Advisory board, who controls them?
Yes, they respond to their advisory board. No other part of local government has any control over trustees.
Our books for that one, how much? Roughly. It's a little over six thousand, Winamac.
But even the trustee responds to the advisory board, goes to advisory board votes to give money.
Unfortunately, North Jetson used to charge for runs. And it could be crazy. So we set up a, a payment arrangement with them and we pay them twenty-five thousand. Wow.
Legislative change in Indiana.
But there was times when I was actually trustee, I had to do an additional person ever done one. And it was over thirty because of a buck fire.
A tax. Unfortunately, that can be added, help fund fire departments. So, you know, I mean, if if they cut, you know. I guess, I guess my concern would be is, you know, giving more, more to the fire department. You know, as a, we'll call it a gift or whatever from, you know, local government. As long as we can handle the option. Fun. Yeah, it's fun.
What's doubling? Thousand?
Ten thousand.
That'd be.
We get five.
Yeah, the.
My thoughts were is that, you know, you got a trustee. Like that one up in township, all that money. Should have been going to the Monterey Fire Department. Nice to be able to look at. But trustee. All right, covered.
That's why I was just telling Sheila, with Rich Grove, because we do three different fire departments. We pay Winamac and White Post a total of a little over six thousand total between the two. But just for the upper portion of our township, we pay twenty-five thousand to North Jetson. Because it used to be per run and it was six, seven hundred dollars per run. Some years it was, it was even more than twenty-five thousand. So the board kind of negotiated with North Jetson, but it's still just the top portion of our township that they take care of.
I think Franklin's the same way. We paid a Tippa Canoe, we paid a Bass Lake, and we paid a Winamac. We paid a free fire department. Yeah, I said Franklin, Franklin pays the three, yeah, Tippa Canoe. Winamac. Bass Lake.
You guys go into Jasper? Do you? Is it?
But it is.
Yeah, and you go into White then too? No, just Jasper, last guy.
But is that just on an MOU where, you know, just a, a, a agreement and mutual understanding where you guys help each other? Cause yeah, yeah. But it's not necessarily that they pay into your fire department, the people in that, in Jasper County.
Fire, they do.
They do?
I went to the county council meeting and state N I, speaker, they presented whatever they're just calling, we talked about fire, different trustees.
They've been trying to get.
Guys are so. I don't know, maybe it's
like, it's a
AJ, what?
Yeah.
So let's, let's say, you guys only get seven dollars for every time you're called out? Cause my, I mean, one of my, one of my best friends is, he's been on the Jasper county, or Jasper County Fire Department, Rentsley, forever and ever and ever. Probably know him plenty. Lenny Larson. He's from up just north of Berryville, but family, but anyhow, and they get a hell of a lot. Yeah, I mean, they get I sixty-five and stuff, but yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I just can't, I, I just couldn't believe, I, I, like I said, I, why would anybody want to do it for seven dollars?
There's a
Yeah, but I mean, but, but still, I mean, you know, yeah, I.
Rephrased, volunteer. Or volunteer.
Right, but, but, but still, I mean, you know.
I joined the fire department.
Yeah, it just, it, it surprises me that, you know.
But how, you got, you got young guys coming in? Do you?
They gave us a little bit of an idea. I think they're still scrambling to figure it out, cause we, I just was able to upload my best values to um, E L G F. Um, and several of the counties can't because of the situation and the, the computer software company trying to figure out because of the deduction going away. Um, it looks like from what Kendall had said when, when he was here, um, it's looking like around a million for the county.
That's, but that's across the board. So the levy going out to the townships, the libraries, schools, the county, everything, right?
Yes.
So I think what I heard, we've been in a couple of A I C, they've kind of told us with roughly a hundred thousand. So I think what I heard, we've been in a couple AIC, they've kind of told us was roughly 100,000.
Yeah, but then the next meeting, it felt...
Yeah, anywhere from like half of them.
But you know...
I don't know if we want to keep that in our back pocket when we're making, that's...
That's why I also made sure that I understood Ms. Codwell, Cadwell, last night from 4C, because I had been on the DLGF website and got the amount that we're supposed to budget for this year, and it was there, because Laura's like, always make us... But she swears, and that's why I wanted to make sure with her, that, because that's $140,000.
So yeah, the way I understand it with them is, they used to have to, the, the federal government has restructured the way we... They're part of this pilot project, kind of work or not. So they no longer are having to see the federal government. We pay the state, the state pays the federal government, the federal government backs, gives it back to them. And that's not happening anymore, and then the federal government, them like lump, big lump sum of money to try and shift ways.
Yeah, that's awesome, especially even if, even for this year's money.
Yes.
Okay, county extension? Okay, we're ready. Yeah, 17 counties, counties are your, uh, county by the space. Uh, annex. Are you out? Be here.
Yeah, I saw a lot of different places. I have one that's in an annex building, it's about three blocks from the warehouse in Cass County. I have several there, fairgrounds, I have several where there's different buildings on my counties, depending on what it is, like this or something else. It's very different from one place to another.
It would be ideal to be on a fairground, so they're not going to move stuff.
I was getting ready to say, I don't think you really want to hear.
How, how many times a year do you want to move out, move in? Yeah, raises.
Yeah, both.
How about I just work from home those days? Just two weeks, you're fine.
One time.
I don't, I don't. Question?
Yeah, I'm good.
I, I have a question about from last year to this year, and I have Sheila and I talked about beginning of the year. I, but I wanted to get more of an explanation. Last year, the part-time increase was a fucking percent increase, but my office manager was less than 3%. So I'm just asking for clarification on why that happened, why? Because then there's not a whole lot of difference in what they're making per hour. I think the hourly is a less than two, it's a $2 difference, $2.30. Why would you create a...
Yeah, on your budget, your part-time help is budgeted higher than your office.
It's two people.
Oh, it's two people, okay.
So maybe even ago, we agreed formally, there were two full-time people, but in that full, that second full-time position, because we had a first deputy and a second deputy before we realized. And you and I talked about why it wasn't a first deputy anymore, but that second position was then dropped to be with two part-time people, so they kind of, they didn't really see all of that. And that has worked fine, I don't leave, I don't leave that to be the full-time. But they're making 1836, and then my office manager is making 1866. I was curious as to why it was such a big increase last year for part-time, because my office manager was less than 3%.
Want me to restate conversation?
Sure.
Well, I mean, the, the, the 3% increase that the department heads, or, or the office staff got last year was the cost of living increase. And then there was, but then there was a revisiting of the part-time wages. So there was, so, so there was, even when we did the full-time wages, the restructuring, the actual wage adjustment, all, not cost of living rate, wage adjustment. Even when we did the full-time, there were some that got higher percentage than others, depending upon how the classification worked. So I'm going to say that's how, how that rose by us looking at what classification, when we did the wage adjustment on the office staff. How that was classified, and then, you know, they got the 3% raise yet last year, which was cost of living rate. So that went to everybody in the county. And then the part-time help was readjusted last year, probably by, once again, by the classification of the job and how, how the math worked out. That's where the number fell.
Is there any way to get my office manager to learn, she is making a little bit more. I know, I've looked at the major different things. I know she can't be a deputy, because I'm not elected for this, but can we look at the, I haven't looked at the first deputy drop restrictions. So we need to watch you doing so much, we need to...
I think what we're actually looking at is revisiting part-time pay. So to adjust it correctly, originally, I think the thought process was to make our part-time pay more attractive for people. And then the benefit of being full-time was you got benefits in perf and all those things. But in some specific cases, there's, we, I think we need to just kind of look at part-time pay. So not necessarily look at your full-time person, but maybe look at your part-time person.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
We have donuts, have a donut, you can't be that near a county.
Order. 10 B, one, 5 B, one. Oil and water only has one. Larry have one? Maintenance have more than one paper?
I think so, I think they have two.
Yeah, they, they have fun? Find them. It's just the third one, recorder's going to go fast. Civil, civil defense. Oh yeah, I think, am I right? Animal, found that a little late. So.
Off.
Ah, okay. Board good. This is one way to force... Courthouse paper. All I have is the courts? Ask. Christine.